Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Monday, February 7th, regular City Council meeting in the city of Bella Beach. Please join me and the Pledge of Aegis. Please rise. (inaudible)
Councilmember Robinaki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Here.
Councilmember Lynn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Natera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Amanda.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
And Councilmember Rita Spoh was unable to attend.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to, I'm gonna have him introduce himself a little bit later, but the distinguished gentleman here, sitting next to Lynn Reeves, is Andrew Salzman. He's our city attorney. He's standing in right now, and we appreciate you being here, Andrew. In a couple of seconds, I'll just give you a chance to introduce yourself when you come to the city attorney's spot, okay? Thank you. Okay, so first, item of business is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Motion by Glenn Gunn. A second.
Second.
Second by Leslie Natera. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Frank Banker.
I don't think my mic's working.
Uh, here.
My mic's not working, so...
(laughing).
Anyway, um, I requested that we submitted a resolution back in December, and it's been held up there to get submitted again, and we asked for another session, it was called agenda. I couldn't say exactly what it was.
Um, is the, is the resolution made at this point? Is it drive-in?
It's already submitted. You can have it sent over to, uh, to Frank Riley, um, if I have time.
Madam Clerk. Yeah, then Frank's mic is not working, that's why you can't hear him. Let me open my slide to the other seat, Frank.
I know that the city manager and city agent Raleigh did discuss that, so...
City Manager?
Yes, Fred and I met a week ago, last Friday, and of course, everyone knows he's going through some things. Uh, he, uh, looked at it, and he thought it needed to be an ordinance instead of a resolution, because it's changing, uh, addressing city council. So, he wa, he, he does have it, it's just, uh, he's kinda been detained the last few days. He's looking at that, plus Section 94. He's gonna finish those things up, of course, he already told me that.
Well, the, the resolution was clearly just, was for, um, our citizens address council, instead of the council having to vote whether we can address them back. Resolution would just give us the opportunity, under our free speech, to address those citizens. Lots of times, the citizens have to stand here, so stay here all night long until council, you know, interacts with them or gives comments. So, hey, let's bring, bring to the people, I've, I've heard, like, some people saying it might take all night to get it, but if you serve on council, then you should stay here. I don't know why we have to do a resolution. Or, I mean, I don't know why we have to be ordinance.
I think, and, and I haven't seen your resolution, but I think, if I understand what you just said correctly, um, right now, in our ordinance, it prohibits us from having a back-and-forth dialogue with citizens, so to change an ordinance, you have to use a notification on the ordinance, so it's an ordinance change, which means one vote, a publication, one vote, a publication, Patty in a newspaper, and then a second vote, and that's about such a change.
Right.
Yep, but what we can do, I mean, this should be addressed, I, you know, it, I don't want it to just be tabled for, you know, or not forever, so if we can get this addressed, in the meantime, um, you can make a motion tonight to dispense with the ordinance. Um, we'll agree with that, I don't see that there'd be a problem to have a back-and-forth. Um, I'll limit the back-and-forth, so we're not gonna go on all night long. I mean, you have three minutes when you come up here, so it'll be, you know, a reasonable discussion, but we can't have, you know, a back-and-forth.
All right, great, yeah.
Suggestion?
Yes.
Rather than change the agenda, why don't we just bring it up in comments around the issue business?
Right, that's, yeah, we will, and then, um, so we're not gonna be able to, that's what I was just saying, I think it does require an ordinance change.
I, I agree.
Yeah, so we're not gonna be able to do it via resolution, and I'd have a problem if we didn't have a resolution on the call, anybody, that's, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Any other comments on the agenda?
Test, 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 test.
All right, welcome, Robin. 6:05, Robinaki's present now. Um, right, so, any other comments on the agenda? Citizens, any comments? Council? All in favor of approving the agenda as is? Aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? This passes, um, we have six people here, six to zero. Next comes citizens' comments. Each person may come up and address the council on any item that is not on our agenda. If it's on our agenda, I'll call you later to speak on that item. When you come up, please come right up here to the podium, give us your name and address, and please observe the rules of conduct. They're on that podium, and they're all around, in a nutshell, basically, just speak in a nice civil manner, and that's the kind of reception we give back. With that, does anybody like to, uh, would anybody like to speak with council? Deborah Mau.
I'm Debbie Mau, I live at 115 Cosway Boulevard. It's not really addressing council, so to speak, but I just wanted to commend Patty on her handling of all of the paperwork for the election and things. Um, she's, I think, done a fabulous job, and she just gets things out so quickly, and I know that's part of her job, but it's not part of her everyday job, and so it's on top of what she has to do every day. So I just, on behalf of, hopefully, all the citizens of Bella Beach, I just wanted to say thank you to Patty.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. Other citizen comments? There will be no others on the closed citizen comments at this time. We have the presentation by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, we have law enforcement and code enforcement, and I say we have two deputies here, so, do you have any?
Sergeant.
Sergeant, right? I'm sorry?
You want a lot of force?
Doesn't matter. They both were good for the month, I think, so...
They were, uh, from Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. The analysis that I'm gonna present is going to be for the month of December 2021. It looks like, uh, we used to, uh, report crimes, we only had one assault, which, through my research, was a domestic-related incident. Uh, there were a total of nine people arrested in there, uh, for that month, and most of those arrests came from traffic-related stops. Of the deputy activity leading that were 195 traffic stops, direct patrols throughout the city, 116 per month, and traffic control of 52. There were five crashes in the city, and the majority looked like they were right here at the intersection of Gulf and Cosway, and somewhere on the bridge. And then, there were a total of 243 citations and warnings issued, and I have to break down here, my head into a bookie bag. Of the 243, two were boating citations, there were 24 traffic citations issued, 22 parking citations, and the rest were warnings, a total of 195 warnings, and that's all.
Sergeant, um, we've been speaking quite a bit, and I know Frank Banker's taken personal interest on the whole safety issue. Do you know anything about those boating incidents?
I don't. I was assigned to Marine Unit to act in early 2000s, and a lot of it is just traffic, our boating safety enforcement out there, usually major postal walkway, just looking for, um, safety inspections, whatnot, obviously, speed zone violation, traffic zone violation, maybe official license violations, et cetera.
Well, this is another excellent month, and congratulations to the many who patrol here, and all the citizens who keep their eyes open. Um, I did note that today, just came through, the sheriff, they have, county has reported, where you can sign up for it, any citizen can, and I noticed there was two burglaries they were out in Gulf Boulevard area, so I'm just guessing, it's probably the same old routine stuff where people are going in cars, so I don't know if you're seeing any more of the, you know, lifts, you know what I call them, the lift-ups, or whatever, where the people are lifting up the handles and stuff, but, um, I don't know if you have any tips for us over here, but I did notice just two in one week here.
Well, Frank, I'm glad that you brought that up, it actually happened on the same night, and the deputy on this ship is the one that actually went and investigated the call. As usual, it's the doors that were left unlocked, so, I'm glad you brought that up, since I was going to, and I was going to just see if we could remind everybody to make sure that they lock their doors.
Heard it from the sergeant folks, lock your doors. Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Citizens, any questions or comments? Thank you, appreciate it. Code enforcement?
Great evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, Mr. Staff, citizens, uh, deputy clerk from the record, just, uh, wanted to do a quick review of what's been going on the last thirty days, uh, myself and the city manager were working very diligently, um, a lot of contractors worked in the city without permits, and as of today, what it gave you now is 17, as of right now, it's 119, because I got two more the, the staff, and, where people are actually not pulling permits, or hiring contractors, or not licensed, uh, coming in, uh, doing the work, and then, of course, nothing's coming through the city, so we, we don't see anything, the city doesn't see them, um, the, uh, but, we, we did have one incident last Thursday, where, uh, a new resident, our electrician, come in to replace a tail in a house, um, and, uh, was not licensed, was not a licensed contractor, she was not insured, and, uh, I heard this morning, got a phone call from the resident, and she told me that she had a house fire, it was electrical, and, uh, it was not because of what the electrician did, but because of a couple squirrels they just decided to do it and to lay the wire, but, uh, they, they were very appreciative, and we are looking to, to these, uh, these issues, and, and again, it's just mainly for the, the residents of this city, and, um, like I said, it's my second month doing this, and as of, like, right now, like I said, we have 19 of them that do a pop, and, uh, along with, I guess, the, uh, what I'm trying to go to the Department of License and Bureau, because they, they, they find that there was a, we, we, on Thursday, got, uh, a lot of problems for not having the proper permits, so, uh, other matters, and, uh, other small little issues, various, uh, fire ordinances that will take care of, and, and doing the education over the enforcement part of it, and everybody's very much in part.
I did notice a lot more of that, um, you know, with the contractors, and, and you finding that, so that's excellent. Two questions. How's the reception that you're getting? I know Danny was quite popular, and you're new, how's things going out there?
I will tell you that, that everybody that meets is just happy, you know, that, yeah, it was hard to see Danny go, but I, I, like, everybody.
Good. And we have been, and it might be too new at this point, you can say something, but we had, we had increased the enforcement hours to about 20 per week, at the recommendation of the city manager. How are you finding that 20? Is it just right, too much, too little?
It is, it is sufficient. I mean, there are some days, I mean, like, I was up last Sunday, or this past Sunday, um, and it, actually, a couple people were in that post due, uh, but during the week, it's, uh, it does keep you busy, because I do adjustment hours, so I turn out, they reply to the debt, uh, but 20 hours is sufficient.
Good. Council, what's that?
Just my kudos to the new sheriff in town here, tell you, within two months, he's changed the face of code enforcement, so he brings a lot of experience in the primary area, and, uh, look forward to working with you, and hopefully, you can put a lot more, uh, spotlight on the after hours and the weekend stuff as well.
Thank you, and again, I, I'm going along from, like I said, from the county, and, uh, I really tell you, I enjoy going over to cities with a different aspect on law enforcement, and I've had a good time there.
Citizens, any comments or code enforcement? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No, good.
Thanks. Okay, item four is our quarterly board reports. Um, we're only gonna have one tonight, because the Board of Adjustment has no report, the Planning and Zoning has no report, Park and Recreation, Tabby Lavenda had a, a personal issue, she's not gonna be able to be here tonight, I don't think there's any replacement person who came in in short notice, or Patty? No. So just Citizen Advisory Committee, do we have someone here? Ron?
The mayor of council, Ron Scannick, I chair the Citizen Advisory Committee. So we've had, uh, three meetings here, uh, beginning of November 16th, uh, we met to discuss capital project budget items regarding the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding, as well as the American Rescue Plan Hack funding, and, and the regulations for that. On December 8th, we met to review the digital side ordinance, and then we had a citizen raise a matter, uh, with concerns over the height of, uh, hedges, walls, and fences, and we agreed to talk about that in our next meeting. So then on January 20th, we met to review, um, the citizens' concern, and, um, we are in the process of making recommendations on, on that, and that was, uh, this individual water zone 20 years ago, the height of one of those four feet, back to your setback, which is 25 feet from the seawall, or from the arteries, and then that code was changed, um, to where it can now be eight feet, and it was only four feet high, uh, from five feet from the seawall. And so, the panoramic bits, though, that this gentleman had, where he bought his home, is no longer there, so, or, it's, we're, it's there, and then we also, on that January 20th meeting, began a review of the side ordinance that city council had tabled the night before, and so we're willing to see the manager to, uh, compare, you know, the primary issue is around, uh, how do we protect constitutional rights of those amended around, uh, local sites, that is the main issue. So those are the, the big topics, and we move on. Any questions?
We found out. Counsel, any questions? Citizens, we have any questions? Thank you, and thanks for the hard work on this, we're looking forward to some of those reports. At this point, we would have the city, item five, is the city attorney's report, as I said, I'm gonna have, um, Attorney Salzman here, take some time, and just introduce himself to everyone. Uh, we know you from the last time you were here, but look, there's some new folks here, and quite a bit of citizens, so if you could just take the floor, Andrew, and tell us what you want to tell us.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
I think your mic is on now.
Certainly, sorry, the circumstances that I'm here, um, I feel terrible, uh, to be in this situation, for, for Ernie Riley. Um, I'm happy to help and assist the city in the way I can, uh, I have spoken to some of you before, I practice law in Pinellas County for 35 years, the last 30 roughly, municipal labor employment, uh, some of the issues that you've talked about, signs, uh, changes in ordinances and resolutions, I'm very familiar with, and have been doing it for a long time. I certainly, uh, am happy to help in any way I can, I, right now, sit as the city attorney for Gulfport, um, so we have similar, some similar issues that you all have, but I had served for Indian Rock Beach for almost 18 years, um, so I, I'm very familiar with kind of the issues that you have, and I'm happy to help you as the, you know, uh, city attorney to be able to.
Andrew, I just wanna thank you. Thank you already when I saw you tonight, but I think, I, I think I can speak on behalf of the whole council, of all our citizens, this was a unforeseen, tragic circumstance here, and I'm just so glad that you're able to do this on short notice. Um, you have, for the folks who don't know, Andrew, he has an incredible background, um, so, um, you're gonna do just fine over here, and really appreciate you, and thank you that you're here for us. And, council, any comments?
Very impressive resume.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh, now, city manager?
Yeah, Mayor, council, I put, uh, you, under, uh, tab six, you've got the, uh, what is the first month of our kind of paper report that we started, uh, just highlighting it, uh, the drainage project, we're in the final, uh, design review for 12th and 13th Street, uh, the audiovisual, uh, change-out started today, uh, that's why you see all these lists and stuff floating around City Hall, and, uh, so they've started that project, they'll get them, uh, during the month of February. Uh, we received the designs back, uh, for 16th City Hall and 7th Street, the boat ramp, uh, there were a couple things that the, uh, engineer missed on the boat ramp, so we sent that back to him to update that and get it corrected. Uh, we submitted a hazard mitigation grant, it's not on here, for the generator, uh, we asked for 180,000, 240,000 we expect. Pinellas County, we ranked eight out of 12 projects, but we, hopefully, we'll get some Tier 2 funding, so that could help us out with the generator, and not cost us as much. Uh, the kind of, uh, the sign, I've heard so much about it, and there's been a lot of misrepresented prices and this, that, that floated around, I'm happy to tell you that the city actually only spent $1,000 for the sign. We got $34,000 back from the insurance. Uh, we had a discussion of the adjuster, and he's already paid us, we were paid, uh, 30, $30,289.30, uh, and then we got $4,040 previously, so the sign ended up costing us $1,000. Uh, our insurance covered it, and our deductible was $1,000, so it, it worked out great for the city.
I'm just gonna interrupt you for a second. I don't know what you did, or what you said to him, but that's absolutely outstanding. I mean, we were talking about getting 5,000 or 10,000 back, you basically got him to pay for almost the whole thing. Excellent. Whatever you did, excellent.
He negotiated it.
Well, he negotiated well, so, yeah.
Yes.
And I will say, we've had a lot of positive, uh, comments about the sign, and I think we've toned it, lightened down, I hope, uh, most of the residents satisfied, and, uh, so, actually, another city has contacted me to ask me about our sign, so, but, that's where we're at with the sign.
Has our insurance premium's going up since we had an insurance adjuster go after that money?
Uh, it may go up minorly, but it's gonna go up, I mean, we have lawsuits and things like that, it's gonna go up there too, so it's, it's negligible, I think, in the scheme of things.
I'm just saying, I mean, my experience is, when you get the insurance adjusters in there, yeah, you do get the windfall, but you pay it back over years. You're out of business, you know?
Well, not, not at this point, but we haven't had any claims for years either, so that's positive for the city, we haven't had claims for years. So, and that's all I have.
Council, any questions or comments? Thank you.
On the 7th Street boat ramp, um, you said they had to back out for, um, there was an engineering problem, they missed some stuff, is there gonna be a total project with the dock put back in with that boat ramp? Is that gonna be bid separately?
That's done separately. There, there's, we've got funding in the budget for a new dock. The boat ramp and the seawall are separate, and, uh, the, really, the issue was, he didn't extend it far enough out in the water, because he, uh, didn't realize it went as far out as he, as, we know it goes.
Can we not do a combined bid on that?
It's really two different, really, two, two different types of contractors, and I think we'd be better served if we went to a dock person specifically, and go to a seawall specifically, I think it would save us money in the big picture.
But just, on that same topic, does the person who's designing the ramp need to know what we ultimately desire for the dock, so that it's coordinated? You don't wanna build the concrete ramp, do the changes, and then find out, you know, hopes we could have done such and such, and made it better, or better designed?
Well, the, the dock, dock person, really, seawall's gonna be, uh, re, lined in the front, new cap, and the, the, uh, boat ramp, where it's at now, it's gonna stay, we're just asking them to take all the broken concrete out and put a new ramp in. So, the dock design actually shouldn't happen until after that's finished, to make sure that, you know, it's set out far enough, because it is gonna go between 12 and 18 inches further out than it is currently, because of the seawall replacement.
Do you have any target dates for both projects at this point?
Well, we're, as I said on the report, we're gonna get the bid out, the first part of March, uh, for the seawall, and, and shortly after that, we, we can go, go ahead and talk to the dock builders at the same time, so I don't, I don't think it's been a delay of much over April and May delays.
I think that was your original list, didn't it?
Yeah.
What?
I've been getting, uh, feedback from residents about pointing the signs appearing on county property. City manager?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple, and, uh, what they're talking about is, uh, the signs on the Stormwater Pond across the street. Our ordinance does state that any sign, it doesn't matter what it is, political, temporary, or permanent, uh, is not to be placed on public property. So, you know, I guess what I would ask is the candidates that have them there, to stay within the code, if they just put them on private property. That's, that's, you know, that, that's in the code, it says, any sign. And I, I don't wanna pick up signs, I'd just rather ask anyone that's got a sign to, to put on private property. Uh, yes, uh, great job on the sign, I'm blown away, I can't believe we got that sign for a grant, great job, thank you very much.
Who else? Citizens, we have any comments? Okay, Lynn, thank you. Patty Gentry, City Clerk, report, item seven.
Well, once again, my projects are not as exciting as city managers', but, um, right now, I'm working on the municipal election documents, scanning them, and converting them, and filing them digitally, and then going through, uh, our last, uh, ordinances that were passed by council, and, uh, codifying them to include them in the code, and, as far as public records, um, at the time of this report, I just have one outstanding, and that's my report.
Counsel? Citizens? Patty, thank you, and I'll echo what Deborah Mau said in terms of the election, I know, you know, it comes around, but there's a lot of extra work associated with it, and we seem to knock it out as fast as it comes in, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have the consent agenda, we have items eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. I'm gonna read them all, we'll, um, we'll make a motion in a second, and we'll pass it all as one unit, there will not be any discussion, there'll not be any citizen comments on it, because it's consent agenda. So item eight is approval of January 3rd, 2022, city council meeting minutes, item nine is approval of January 18th, 2022, city council work session minutes, item 10, approval of city attorney monthly invoice for legal services, item 11, city council acceptance of, uh, city attorney Fred Riley's resignation, and, um, item 12, authorize city manager to advertise for legal services for the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Yes, second?
Second.
Second by Glenn Gunn. Again, there's no discussion on this, so at this point...
The January 3rd meeting, it was in there. Which group?
Okay, so, procedure would, would have been to take this out of the consent agenda, we could have moved it back when we put the agenda. Um, can I ask what the error is?
That Frank Banker voted twice.
I have a problem. Patty, let me ask you this, I, 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 I don't know, I don't wanna have inaccurate minutes, can we correct that, after the fact, if we approve this?
As you said, I can't hear. Councilmember May 3rd, very well, to page three?
Page three, he's, he has him voting twice on an issue.
Oh, okay, yes.
So it's just a script, you think you can correct that on the, after we approve this?
And, yes, I will.
Does anyone on council have objection to that correction? So the minutes are accurate?
I'd like clarification on which way you voted.
Which, Frank, January 3rd, page three, go ahead, tell us exactly the wrong date issued.
Is motion to table for discussion of the resolution at the next city council work session, and I oppose it.
Okay. I remember that you did do that, so Patty, we'll double-check it, of course, right? Okay, all right. So with that correction, does anybody have an objection as corrected? Okay. Okay, so then we have item eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Item eight will be corrected as, as you just said. Councilmember Frank Bankard has presently shown on page three in favor of the motion to table. He should be opposed. Patty Gentry will double check this back to the original tapes, and if Frank is correct, which I believe he is, he'll make that correction then with our approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then all in favor? Aye, aye. Is anyone opposed? Six to zero, consent agenda passes with that one change. Okay, we move to the regular agenda. Item thirteen, to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for interim legal services for the city attorney. So Mr. Solisman here will be able to continue and be paid, which I think is kind of important. He's nodding, yeah. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Frank Bankard, second?
Second.
Thinking by Dave Gaddis. Frank, you have the floor.
Speech for itself, we need an attorney. Yes, it comes with a highly qualified resume?
He absolutely comes with a highly qualified resume, so, yes. Anyone else on council? Citizens, any comments? Back to council, and Frank, you'll get the last word. Okay, so what we have on the table right now is to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for interim legal services for the city attorney from Mr. Solisman here. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Six to zero. I will sign that this evening before we leave. Item fourteen is unfinished business. Is there any? Hearing none? We move to city council comments. This is an even month, so we begin with Robin Aki.
Ask any comments?
No comments. Frank Bankard?
Uh, just to compliment Patty, as the citizen did, you do an excellent job. You're underpaid, mind you, but we were, we were blessed to have you.
Thank you, Frank. Glenn Dunn?
Just to recap on the, uh, the significance of this electronic sign. An old monument sign blows down, and we gotta replace it. There's a lot of recommendations on how to do this thing. The communications committee gives, uh, a recommendation. We go up for a bid, and we get a bid back for fifty-five thousand dollars. And although all of the council members unanimously like the product, we all believe that it's priced a little too high. So we send it back to the drawing board, and we get a scaled-down version for thirty-five thousand dollars. Never sixty-five thousand, as information has it out on the street, never was that number ever considered, sixty-five thousand. The bid comes back with, for thirty-five thousand, with essentially all of the elements that we liked on the original sign. At the time that we were discussing the new price of thirty-five thousand dollar product, we're getting some initial feedback from the insurance companies that we might get somewhere between eleven to fourteen thousand dollars, uh, for the sign that blew down. And while we go through the throes and trying to decide whether or not we want an electronic sign, we receive an insurance check for four thousand dollars. And later on, as this electronic sign debacle progresses, we begin to think that we may not get any more than four thousand dollars. Well, we send back our city manager to renegotiate that insurance thing, and he comes back with an additional thirty thousand dollars on this electronic sign. The city ends up paying one thousand dollars for state-of-the-art technology and a aesthetically pleasing sign, and basically we've got other cities asking us about it right now, and basically falls into the vision that this council had the vision, the wisdom, and the courage to pull forward on this thing. So I would like to not only express my kudos to, uh, kudos to city manager Lynn Reeves, but all the council members who had the courage and wisdom to pull forward on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Natero? Thank you, Dave Gaddis.
Okay, I've, I've got something I wanna pass out everyone, just so that you can read along with it. I included a letter that was sent off to a senator and a representative, and was carbon copied to other elected officials in our state, asking that, uh, that they create a deal that, in my opinion, is, uh, pretty much an encroachment on our home rule. Uh, I don't want to blast anyone for trying or anything like that, but the purpose of this is just to make everyone aware that we need to be careful about what we're asking for. So I'm just gonna read this to you, and I've, I've given everyone here copy. Home rule is the authority of a local government to prevent state government intervention with its operations. I want to caution all members of this council to carefully consider the possible repercussions of any request for new state regulations. Before asking for state intervention, please ask yourself the following. Will this regulation have an impact on our home rule? Will this regulation affect our city today? Could there be a circumstance in the future where we would no longer want this type of regulation? If created and passed, this particular request would impact our home rule. Further, it could plant seeds for heavier regulation than the author originally intended. Everyone in this room has the freedom to make these requests. Before considering state regulation, I ask that each of you consider every possible outcome, not just what you intended. You may get way more than expected. Please do whatever you can to protect our home rule. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Dave. So I'm gonna, I didn't have any comments, but after that comment, I'm, I'm gonna actually say something and add to it, because I think it's important that you, um, understand the whole idea behind home rule. Home rule is local government making the rules for its locality. There's generally the thought that people up here are in the best position to make the best choices for Beller Beach, because you elected us, we represent you. You don't want someone from Tallahassee doing that. With that said, we're under assault from Tallahassee. Uh, previously spoken out about Tallahassee's trying to ram down, um, short-term rentals down our throat. We don't want it. Others, representatives every year, they're doing it right now, trying to ram that stuff down. So when, I didn't, I'm not the person who reached out, but I will say that the person who reached out, reached out over the issue of shade on the beach. Now, home rule's a great thing when it's exercised properly, but when it's abused, then Tallahassee steps in and takes away your ability to regulate yourself. When you're gonna trample someone's constitutional right and medical right to make a decision as to whether they protect themselves from skin cancer, then yes, you're going to get Tallahassee involvement. Frank Bankard, you're the person who did this, and by the way, I...
I'm not covering whatever we're doing.
Well, I'll, I'll see if we can, if the council, it's only six-thirty, I'll see if the council will open this up to a little discussion here. But Frank Bankard did it, and I want you to know that three months before that, June Van Scoy did it. She lobbied Nick DeSigley. Didn't get anywhere with it. Maybe for the short-term rentals, he would've done something for us. But, um, we tried, folks, okay? If you're gonna abuse your power, your power will be taken away. So home rule is not to be protected at all costs, it's to be used and used wisely. And so that's what Mr. Bankard did, that's what June Van Scoy did. It's part of your right to lobby your elected representatives. Right now, it's legislative week on Tallahassee, the, um, the sub-coast legal cities, which I remember sends a group every year to lobby the legislators for all the points of interest that we have. Um, so unfortunately, this didn't make the cut for bills this year, um, but it'll be tried again, and again, and again, because no one in Florida should ever be forced to suffer in the sun without protection. It's your choice, you make the call, not some guy sitting in a five-billion-dollar mansion. With that, my comments conclude. However, um, Frank, you, I, understanding you might wanna speak, it's up to the council, we have to dispense with the rules, it's only eight forty. I have no problem having a brief discussion if you wanna rebut this, but if they don't give us the okay, then this meeting's gonna come to an end. So we wish to dispense with the rule and have a brief discussion here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I got two in favor, three in favor, anybody who's against?
I'm against.
One, two, I have two against. How many are four? Two? You're four. For discussion, yeah. Right, you're in four, and you have Lesman, you break the time.
Four.
Four, okay, we have four votes. Frank Bankard, you have the floor. And we're gonna keep this brief, okay?
Yeah, um, I received, uh, two, a sen, a state senator, state rep is trying to get a bill passed, uh, for cigarette. They, I'm gonna try to paraphrase this as quick as I can. They're concerned about cigarette butts that are on the beach. They're concerned cigarette butts are one of the most hazardous or bacteria, um, trash items that are on the beach. So you have a senator and a state rep that's very concerned about people's safety, kids picking up cigarette butts. So I wrote to them, I said, hey, I think it's a great idea. And I got this, I got the email to my city account, all right? So I wrote back and I said, right now, we're being under attack because we can't put a shade. And I consider Florida one of the, um, highest probability for skin cancers that you can get because we are the sunshine state. So I said, why don't we look at creating a bill that would prohibit towns from prohibiting cleaning up Avian realms, I'm saying. Now, I am rarely sorry, Mr. Gaddis, that I offended you by doing that, all right? But you're the guy that promoted a resolution after people stood there and cried.
Point of order. This is a personal attack. Frank, um, I'm gonna find that somewhat well-founded, so...
Okay, well, I'm just saying, well, there was a councilman...
Frank, hang on a second. Just address it in general, not directly to Dave Gaddis.
One of our councilmen presented a resolution, okay, that when women were up here almost crying for help, okay? And we said, no, we don't wanna get involved in a, in a lawsuit, okay, that would protect yourselves, your kids, your grandkids, all right? And we probably would've had this whole shade thing resolved by now. But this council didn't. This council decided to promote a sign, okay? Whoa, great, you look like a car wash out front. But when it came to your safety and your health, all right, they burned it down. That's right.
You know, it's funny, we talk about this. I, I just have, as I'm looking over to Frank to talk to him about point of order, I don't know if you can get this, Victor. This is the cover of our book. It's taken from our city services, it's from our city website. Umbrellas, they're legal in Beller Beach, folks. We protect you here, but, um, some people don't do that. So if that means you lose your home rule, rule power, then it means that. And if we can succeed the legislative way, that's fine. We're gonna try and succeed the, um, legal way, because people don't want to talk. They've had five opportunities. They can talk to me anytime they want, they've got a personal cell phone, so they can call, but they don't. We almost had a solution in the summer. Two of our residents tanked that. Our residents tanked it by putting up signs all over the city. They ruined it for you. You would've probably had this settled last summer. We're moving forward. Depositions start next, twenty-first. Fly the same. City council, any other comments? Anyone wanna be heard?
Okay.
Okay, Rob?
Can you hear me?
Yes, uh, not well.
I guess I don't understand the point of this. What was the point of bringing this up? I think... Taylor emailing our elected officials with the concern is valid. I don't see this doing anything wrong rule. This isn't talking about sign ordinances, isn't talking about other legal momo jomos, is talking about a health crisis and being a physician, being a surgeon who has done wide local excisions and removed big chunks of people, muscle tissue bone from melanoma. I can certainly be in support of shade, because like it says in his email, children, my children's age right now, having too much sun exposure, they'll be almost guaranteed to have skin cancer by the time they're young adults. So I don't really see this as sufficient, justifiable something to bring up at a meeting. I don't know if you're just trying to make yourself look good, I don't know what this is, I, I don't understand the point of this. So I, I applaud you for trying to bring up a health crisis that could be happening on our, our shores, and, um, yeah, I think this, I don't understand.
I'd like to be right there.
Glenn Dunn?
Yeah, this is going exactly where I figured it would go, but nobody is arguing the health benefits of this thing, Dr. Google. Nobody has ever argued this thing, not, yes, I mean, no.
Glenn, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with the point of order, all right? Yeah.
Point taken, point, point taken.
Yep.
No, you can call me a Catholic.
Folks.
Point is taken, but nobody has ever argued the health positives or negatives of this aspect. It has always been an issue about how best to address it, and who is best at addressing it, and how we go about addressing it. And, you know, we started down one path as a consensus of the council, which was directing our city manager to negotiate, and where we heard that before tonight? Who came back negotiating the digital sign and walked away with, uh, sitting up in the plus, come on? It's always been about how we do it, how's the best way to do it. It's never been about who's, who's against skin cancer or who's for skin cancer. It's never been that way. So why try to make it an issue that way? It's always been about what's the best way to solve this problem? But the, but the email wasn't about kids, people getting skin cancer. It's a pretty known fact, high bad sun...
I think that you're totally...
I'm not gonna argue the merits in...
Frank, finish that. Okay.
And, and that's what I'm saying, hey, look, I, I have a lot of respect for a city manager, I think he does a great job. But he did say an insurance adjuster got involved, okay, to get us to thirty-five grand. Everyone of you just go home tonight, okay, and try to get your, your homeowner's insurance, that nobody wants to write policies down there, because the home, because the insurance adjusters have ruined this state by replacing roofs that don't need them, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's why your insurance rates have gone through the water. And I believe our insurance will be...
What are you talking against?
So... So, um, I wanna address something Glenn Dunn said. Negotiations, wonderful. I do it all the time, it takes two people to negotiate, and when you send a team of people, not just the city manager, you yourself went virtually across the street, along with me, along with Jody Shirley, we all spoke on our individual topics and spoke very nicely. Um, there's copious notes in the minutes of Beller Shore for July twenty-first, twenty-twenty. It's online, you can go read it, and it was a very accurate transcription. Um, and when we got done with that, they not only voted to uphold the law of banning our umbrellas, they said, and I'll quote, uh, council member Steve Bloom said, you wanted, they wanted to talk with Beller Beach, and he said, well, I'll listen, but I'm not changing my mind. I have the tape, folks, okay? Now, on top of that, okay, the council did send the city manager over, and perhaps you forgot the memo that I read into the record, of how the city manager went one week earlier and said he was going to help Beller Shore. Said that they could make laws right up to the water, which is legally incorrect, and called the people who were complaining about it rabble-rousers. That was not written by us, folks. That was written by their city clerk to their mayor. That was not written by us, folks. That was written by their city clerk to their mayor. And they had no idea that it would ever be discovered in litigation. That is not negotiating for us. That is negotiating against us. Beller Shore was given by me, and I'm looking at Deborah Mall and Rick Shock. Each of us sent letters. They had upwards of a, well, a month, but they actually had two months to come back adequately and do something about this ordinance. They did nothing. Then on September 28th, I sued them. And they still have done nothing. So what you may have heard, there are standoffs. There's no standoff. I've got an expert report that just says what Robinaki just said about the dangers of skin cancer. They produce no expert. We go to depositions at the end of the month. This case is moving forward to trial. I'm gonna get you your umbrellas back, okay? They can negotiate anytime they want. They can negotiate with anyone they want. Negotiations in a lawsuit are privileged. You can't use them as evidence in a court of law. So the law encourages negotiation. I've tried five times. I'm not gonna keep asking them. The next move is theirs if they want to negotiate. But I am moving forward, and the case is headed right now, right where I want it to be going. If they want to change their minds, change it. It's not just about umbrellas, by the way, folks. It's about bicycles on the beach. It's about parking lot abuse. It's about food on the beach. It's about breaching fiduciary duty. This is no longer one issue. They were warned. If we went in, we go in on all the issues we have. It's, they leave a 12 or 13-count lawsuit. Not one count. It's not just umbrellas anymore. And there's two years' worth of damages for 43 people, assumed to be 45 people. That's all I want to say. Anyone else? I'm sorry.
My mistake. The, the whole point of the letter was to warn everyone, be careful of what you ask for. It doesn't matter what you ask for. It's about the way that you go about doing it and what the outcomes are. Has nothing to do with your lawsuit. Has nothing to do with skin cancer. Has nothing to do with Frank Bankard's intentions. What it is about, okay, it is about, is about warning.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Sure.
Point of order, okay? So I told Frank, let's just direct it, not individually.
Not a personal attack, just stating a fact. Anyway, the whole point is, is that we're worried about home rule, and every time that a letter is fired off to Congress, we, we, something could be changed because you're mad at another town, and the outcome may not only be smacking us, but every city in the state of Florida. And that's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking you to stop and think about before you get on your keyboard and start sending emails out to everybody asking for the state of Florida to step in and control us and everyone around us because we do not want that. That's all I have to say.
There is no place in my email asking the state to control everything. My, the thing was that the state's concerned about cigarette butts, which I'm not saying they shouldn't, all right? Why aren't, why doesn't the state get involved with people, kids, the elderly, myself, my grandkids, okay? Being exposed to the harmful rays of the sun by a town that we can't control in our home rule, okay? Establishing or not establishing impeachment laws. And that's all I'm saying. This council did not do its job by protecting the citizens from 20th Street South, all right? I'm not saying all the people, Robin, I told you, Mayor, I told you.
Any other comments? I know it's funny, right? Glenn, skin cancer is a funny topic. Maybe you can come to the...
Point of order.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We're not doing comments, so we can't break into the comments here. We're having a discussion, but then you can make, you'll be first up to make that motion to adjourn. We're not, by the way, all right, and that's all. I'm not gonna find your point of order valid, and I'll tell you why. Our rules say that you're not supposed to be making any noises or comments or disruptions while another person's talking. I don't believe anything I said was funny. But if skin cancer is funny to you, by all means, the export, the expert report was filed yesterday afternoon. And read it, and learn how funny it really is, or maybe have a little sidebar with Robin. Any other council comments? Okay, now Leslie, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, six to zero. Good night, everyone.